I just got it all clear. We are live streaming. Thank you for your patience. Say I fixed it, but no one would believe me, but we've got good people here and they did so. Like to call the meeting to order, please. Special Public Council Meeting, Thursday, February 25th. Welcome to everyone. First. First item is disclosure pecuniary interests, the general nature thereof. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing anyone, so. This is a public meeting. I want to welcome everyone. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to launch the official plan process, to hear from members of the public who have registered to provide public comment regarding what they would like to see prioritized during this review process. This is just one of the many ways that members of the public will be able to engage with council and our planner over the coming year. We will be receiving comments by mail, email, or phone. The county has also launched a survey so that we can hear from as many people as possible. All of this information and regular updates about this process are available on the County of Elgin's website. I will now turn things over to Elgin County's manager of planning, Nancy Posado. Go ahead, Nancy. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Hello and welcome, everyone, to the first public meeting on the County of Elgin's official plan review. My name is Nancy Posado, and I am the manager of planning for the County of Elgin. I'm going to provide some background and a brief overview of the official plan review process. Now, normally, this type of meeting would be occurring in a more public setting, but at this time, obviously, that's not possible. I'm very hopeful that in the future, we'll be able to reconnect and have these types of meetings in a in person in the future. So some, next slide. So some background. Elgin County is comprised of seven local partner municipalities, including from east to west, the municipality of Bayham, the township of Malahide, the town of Elmer, the municipality of Central Elgin, the township of Southold, municipality of Dutton-Dunwich, and the municipality of West Elgin. So as of the most recent census from 2016, the population of Elgin County is actually 50,069 people. We are predominantly comprised of agricultural lands, but also include rural and urban settlements, 85 kilometers of Lake Erie shoreline, and significant natural heritage features. Next slide. So what is an official plan? In basic terms, it's a document to guide development and growth. It's considered to be a roadmap for how a municipality wants to develop over the next 20 to 30 years. It's also a legal document that is required under the provisions of the Planning Act. All municipalities, regions, and counties have an official plan and are required to have an official plan. Elgin County's first official plan was only recently approved in October of 2013. Next slide. Official plans have a lot of policies related to growth and development, and those policies impact everyone. The official plan contains policies on the protection of agriculture. It outlines criteria and policies related to new housing, employment, and retail in settlement areas. It protects natural heritage features and their functions, and it plans for county roads and other infrastructure that are necessary. Next slide. As per the Planning Act and the provincial policy statement, an official plan is required to be updated every five years. This ensures it reflects the changing needs of the communities, as well as ensuring that it meets all new and relevant planning legislation, like the most recent update to the provincial policy statement. Next slide. So these most recent changes to the provincial policy statement will necessitate changes to our own official plan. These changes were summarized in a previous report that was done for county council in August of last year, and this report will be made available on the official plan review webpage for anyone that is interested. As has been discussed, excuse me, there are relevant planning changes that have occurred over the last eight years, and these are some of the topics that will likely be warrant a review and possible changes or additions to the official plan. As has been discussed by our county council several times, we are undertaking a review of the population and employment projections and land needs assessment for the county and each of the local municipalities. This may result in settlement boundary expansions, depending on the data that we receive. A review of the policies related to settlement expansions, including defining the term minor and looking at land swaps considerations at the local level, are also going to be looked at. Full services are still considered to be the main consideration for development. However, minor infilling and rounding out are permitted when partial services are also available. There is also the potential for local municipalities to consider communal servicing as an option. Indigenous consultation will be an important component, as will climate change and potential impacts. Recent legislation has made it mandatory for municipalities to permit secondary dwelling units. The Elgin Natural Heritage Study and source water protection may necessitate additional changes to the official plan and natural heritage policies. A clarification may be required on condominium types, and those requirements may also be needed to be incorporated into the official plan. But for tonight, we'd like to hear if there are any other topics that we should also be looking at or that we should be reviewing as part of this process. Next slide. So for tonight, we'd like to hear what the public is saying. What are the concerns with the official plan? What sort of policies or areas should we be looking at? Are there other issues or considerations that also need to be looked at? Is the current official plan working? If so, what is working? But also, we'd like to hear from the councillors. What are you hearing from, at the constituent level? What are you hearing from at the local municipal level? Are there other suggestions on how we can engage the community, given this unprecedented time? We want people to connect with us and provide their comments on this first step in the process. We have a dedicated webpage, which will be the main landing site for all things official plan review, and we will regularly update it with any reports, presentations, and any other information that comes out. And we will post all of our notices and let everyone know where we're at in the process on this webpage. We also have an email address. People can call, or they can write in their comments through regular mail. We also, as of tonight, have a survey available on our webpage, and we ask that anyone that is viewing the meeting to head over to our webpage and complete that survey. The deadline for all comments is April 15th at this time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Nancy. It's now time for the registered delegates to speak. Each delegate has five minutes to speak. As a reminder to council, tonight, we are receiving input from the speakers as to matters that should be considered within the official plan review. Except for clarification of matters of interest to the presenters, tonight is not the time or place for detailed exchanges. We'll have plenty of opportunity to do that through interviews, focus group discussions, surveys, and open houses or statutory public meetings. I have a list of the delegates. And John Armstrong from Armstrong Strategy, you are up first, sir. Welcome and go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is John Armstrong, and I am here representing the Ontario Masonry Association, known as Masonry Works, and I am joined by my colleague, the executive director of Masonry Works, Andrew Payne. And we're here this evening because we have a province-wide initiative called Building Tomorrow's Heritage Neighborhoods Today. We've been, we follow municipalities across the province as they do their official plan reviews and and for lower-tier municipalities, they do urban design guidelines and secondary plans, and we recommend to the municipalities language that they can put into their, into those documents to ensure that builders who come to build in their communities build to a higher standard. And where we, we understand that as, as, as the county, you're not specifically, you're not specifically responsible for urban design guidelines, we did note that in your current official plan, you do encourage the lower-tier municipalities to develop urban design guidelines. And we're just, we're here today just, just to make a recommendation to, to the county that it consider during this process drafting and working with, with your local area municipalities, sample urban design guidelines. Because in our experience, when you get into smaller municipalities, they simply don't have the resources to develop those policies, those policies properly. And, and, and they're better off to pool resources with, with, with the county and with other municipalities. And the county may want to choose, may be interested in developing some sample design guidelines just to help the, the, the lower-area municipalities ensure that builders who want to build in those communities do in fact, do in fact, build to those higher standards. Because the, the, we call our initiative Building Tomorrow's Heritage Neighborhoods Today because the decisions that are being made by this council and, and other councils in the county, they're really hundred-year decisions. So you're, so you really want to get it right, particularly when you're talking about the built form. So we encourage you through this process to, to, to keep that in mind and to consider adding and adding into the, the official plan and not just the encouragement to establish comprehensive design guidelines, but to work with the lower-tier municipalities to, to develop those. With that, I will thank you.
I thank you, John. Appreciate that. Our next speaker delegate is Gary Blazek. Welcome, Gary, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments at this early stage of the official plan review process. By way of introduction, I'm a consulting planner with over 30 years of professional experience in Elgin County. I've worked extensively with several of the lower-tier municipalities, primarily in East and West Elgin, and also with private sector clients throughout the entire county. As such, I'm very familiar with the 2013 official plan, how it applies in the context of planning decisions and approvals. My particular interests at this point relate to the identification of settlement areas and a designation of lands capable of supporting orderly growth in the west parts of the county, namely in the municipalities of Dutton-Dunwich and West Elgin. A great deal of advanced local planning and engineering has been completed in these municipalities since the original official plan of the County of Elgin was prepared and approved. This work has largely been driven by private interests who are very committed to investment and development and its associated economic impacts in these two lower-tier municipalities. These interests and investments have been made, in some cases, in the absence of supporting designations in the county's official plan. For example, the preparation of a secondary plan for Port Glasgow by the municipality of West Elgin and two associated draft plans of subdivision on and adjacent to these lands have been completed and are either approved or very close to approval. Yet Port Glasgow has never been recognized as a settlement area in the county's official plan. And in my opinion, this should be addressed. Similarly, the Dutton-Dunwich official plan includes detailed policies for the preparation of a secondary plan in Port Talbot. The secondary plan anticipates both land- and water-based tourism and recreational development. And in fact, an application for a major marina development here has already been submitted to the Ontario Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry. Yet, like Port Glasgow, Port Talbot has never been recognized as a settlement area in the county's official plan. This should also be rectified, in my opinion, in the next iteration of the county's official plan. Thirdly, I'll make reference to the village of Dutton and the municipality of Dutton-Dunwich, which is an area of substantial recent investment in land and infrastructure by private development interests. The success of one particular subdivision development in Dutton has led that consortium to acquire significant additional lands in and adjacent to the designated settlement area of the village. This type of expressed confidence and investment by private interests is vital to the economic survival and quality of life in these municipalities. Future iterations of the county's official plan, therefore, should be both flexible and responsive to serious investment opportunities. And when these opportunities represent bona fide examples of logical and orderly growth as defined in the provincial policy statement, the county, through its official plan, needs to support and encourage these investments, which are vital to both lower-tier and upper-tier community interests. Those are my preliminary thoughts, beginning of the process, so I thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate your comments. Next up, we have Leith Coghlan. Leith, are you there?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Well, again, thank you very much, Mr. Warden and members of council. My name is Leith Coghlan, and I am the managing director of Endpoint Public Affairs, which is based in London. However, I am a local resident, and as many of you know, I have actively observed the conduct and deliberations of county council for nearly six successive years with little absence. The official planning process that you have launched is indisputably the most consequential to Elgin County since 1967, when the Ford Motor Company of Canada opened the St. Thomas Assembly in Talbotville. Why is that? Because Ontario and Elgin County are facing the greatest number of pressures in a century. Regardless of what is anticipated, the next decade alone will see dramatically altered development, demographics, economics, the local landscape, and even our governance. It is crucial that Elgin County and this council are seized of the consequences and can be reasonably observed to conduct this process with attentiveness, precision, and most of all, transparency. There are distinct paradoxes that presently exist in Elgin that have caused collisions within the space of planning over the past several years. Elgin County, in collaboration with several other public agencies and the lower-tier municipalities, have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on reports and assessments that in final analyses have been found to be conflictual, incomplete, and at times insufficiently rationalized. Some were later abandoned due to public outcry, and many of the outstanding issues have remained unaddressed. Agriculture and development are often viewed as exclusive, but need not be. At the same time, constituencies and public office holders in Elgin will need to make peace that protecting both agricultural and sensitive lands must be reconciled through collaboration, complementarity, consultation, and correction. Managing growth smartly will also involve targeted intensification and acceptance that planning and its standards must be consistent and fairly applied. County and lower tiers have had difficulty of late with consistency, in fairness, in many of their decisions. I and several other observers are concerned that the process that has launched without sufficient definition or scope. It is critical that Elgin County gets this process correct. Inattention to detail prompts dysfunction. Dysfunction prompts conflict. Each of those consequences have attendant costs, and they can be prevented. As council looks to direct the steps, we would underscore that receiving input by itself is insufficient. Council and staff must be prepared to return to the drawing board where necessary, amend where prudent, and rescind where warranted. The information and materials involved in this process are voluminous and can be complex. Elgin County will need to be deliberate and proactive to walk everyone, all stakeholders, through the data implications and rationales. Done correctly, Elgin can course correct for the post-pandemic environment and be well-equipped. Done poorly, it will cost. We look forward to contributing to this being done right and for the deliberate, open, responsive, and most of all, fair evolution of the next official plan as Elgin manages growth. We will be active and present throughout, and Mr. Warden, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening.
Thank you, Leith. We'll continue on with Ted Hallwa, please. Welcome, Ted. Go ahead.
Looks like Ted may have left the meeting.
Yeah. Well, I don't see Ted. If he'll come back, if he comes back, I guess. That leaves you, Donna. Welcome, Donna. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thanks for including me in this first virtual meeting of the OP. As it is the first step in the review, I did want to ensure the inclusion of agriculture and in particular, the Elgin Federation of Agriculture. The EFA is the largest general farm organization in the county with 1,112 members out of the approximately 1,300 farmers, so we do represent vast majority. We do appreciate the county's 2013 OP. And reviewing the, the OP, I am enforcing our support for the policy and will highlight certain areas of the document, such as Part II, Part AA1. The agricultural sector has long been and is expected to be the most dominant sector in the local economy. A significant portion of Elgin County's land base is farmed on some of the highest-quality soils in Ontario. I also agree with your goal, quote, "to protect as much of the county's prime agricultural area as possible" and "to encourage the development of a broad range of agricultural uses, agriculture-related uses, and secondary uses" to ensure that the agricultural industry can continue to thrive and innovate. That's Goals A 3.4. Elgin's farmland is a shrinking resource, and if we are to accomplish our common goals and move forward with the emerging issue of improving food security, we need to ensure the operation of such resources. One aspect of protection in the agreement with your objective is to, quote, "protect the county's prime farmland agricultural area from fragmentation, development, and land uses unrelated to agriculture," C 2.1C. We are in agreement with your growth management plans to consecrate, to concentrate all development in settlement areas and with the direction of lots created in the agricultural area, E 1.2.3.4. Recently, there was some activity to, what was a new term to me, was the land swap, and that was for a change of settlement area while another lower-tier OP process was working. And as noted in B 2.8.4, "an amendment to this plan will be required for a settlement area expansion or for the establishment of a new settlement area. An amendment to this plan may not be required in conjunction with an amendment to a local OP that provides for a minor settlement area boundary adjustment." And as alluded to earlier in the presentation by Nancy, what is the definition of minor? Certainly, with this new activity of land swap, there was a potential of 250 new units on agriculturally-zoned property. Certainly, we would agree that a public comprehensive review would be in order for that magnitude of development. EFA is also looking for inclusive language in the OP for direction to municipalities regarding the increasing pressure from urban residential use that seems to sometimes extend to interfering with agricultural operations. Non-farming neighbors may not understand normal farm practices and may object to odor, noise, dust, animal manure, or other realities of farming. This may result in negative interactions or neighbor disputes about normal farm practices. Indeed, the significance of this is demonstrated with recently the Bill 156, Security from Trespass and Food Safety Act of 2019, which is to protect farms, farm families, and the safety of the entire value food chain by addressing the ongoing threat of unwanted trespassing and activists who disrupt Ontario farms and the safety of the food system. Municipalities need to be clear in their bylaws to ensure residents abide by the Farming and Food Protection Act. EFA can engage with municipalities to help them with recognition that agriculture is a complex and constantly evolving industry. We need to promote awareness among new, non-farming neighbors about the realities of living in an agricultural area. EFA also supports the county OP with the economic strategy to support diversity and value-added activities. That's A 5.2. C. On-farm diversification, such as food processing, retail farm markets, agritourism, et cetera, is growing in Ontario and Elgin. Promoting farm business diversification through on-farm processing and agritourism is a way to mitigate risk for farmers while enhancing rural economic development that enhances opportunities for small-scale food processing, retail, food service operations to thrive on farms and meet the urban demand for local food. So thanks for listening to my initial comments this evening, and know that the elected EFA board who farm throughout Elgin are able to work with the county and the municipalities on interests of agriculture, such as in your agriculture advisory committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate the comments. Ted, you're back. Welcome. If you can hear me, we can't hear you.
How about now?
We can hear you. Go right ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and members of county council. My name is Ted Hallwa, and I'm here to make a submission on behalf of the PSVA. I am a director of the, one of nine directors of that organization. The PSVA, or Port Stanley Village Association, was established back in 2011, owing divestiture of the harbor, the Port Stanley Harbor, from the Government of Canada to the municipality of Central Elgin. Today, we are an entity of about 200 members. We are incorporated, and we are practicing one of our objectives of trying to improve and protect the quality of life in the village. I believe you have my submission, and I, my intention is to go through it. It is, it is not long, and I hope to be within the five-minute allocation. The Port Stanley Village Association supports development in the village that satisfies the provincial policy statement, as reflected and embedded, I would say, in the current Elgin County official plan, to encourage development, intensification, and redevelopment in settlement areas such as the village. But we do not similarly support high-density commercial residential development that is out of character due to its magnitude and character with existing built environment, residential, and commercial. The PSVA is concerned that high-density residential commercial development is totally out of character with the traditional character of Port Stanley, which is strong, identifying, and cherished. The concern of the PSVA was illustrated in the recent case of Presbeck Construction Limited and the municipality of Central Elgin in 2019 before the local planning appeal board or tribunal, commonly known as ALPAD. It became apparent at the hearing that, that, in that case, that the provisions of the Central Elgin Official Plan and zoning bylaw and the provisions of the Elgin County Official Plan were inadequate to prevent the approval by ALPAD density commercial residential development that was overwhelmingly opposed by the general public. Going forward, accordingly, the PSVA will be seeking revisions to strengthen the Central Elgin Official Plan and zoning bylaw, currently on hold by the municipality as a result of this county official plan review. The PSVA will also advocate for the implementation of such other planning measures and tools as may be appropriate to prevent the approval of high-density residential commercial development in the village in the future. In addition, the PSVA requests revisions to the county official plan be made to ensure the plan is supportive and aligned with the policies of local official plans, which it itself has approved. At the aforementioned ALPAD hearing, the issue of compatibility featured prominently. In the absence of a definition in the Central Elgin Official Plan, ALPAD deferred to the definition in the county official plan. It is only logical to assume that the county intended its definitions of terms to apply to anything more than the county official plan and not the official plans of its lower-tier municipalities. The PSVA, therefore, also respectfully requests that the county consider a disclaimer in the county official plan to, to that purpose and effect. Finally, the PSVA is also about growth and size of the village, and I'm pleased to hear that some areas and so many boundaries are already county's agenda during this review. Understand that any boundary expansion would have to be approved by the county in accordance with carefully considered criteria stipulated in the county official plan, and I believe these have been referenced by Donna, Section B 2.8. Conspicuously absent of criteria is a requirement for consideration of using the community in any proposed boundary expansion. expansion. The PSVA asks that the county be revised, and I think your document says to reflect this, what we mean to, is really to fix it, Mr. Warden. So there is one other criteria, some consideration.
Ted, I don't want to be rude, but your time is, wrap it up real quick. Your time's up. I'm sorry.
The end of my submission, Mr. Warden. Thank you for hearing me and hope to continue in the process as it unfolds.
Appreciate it, Ted. Thank you. Next up, we have Andrew Payne. Andrew, if you're here, you have the floor. Go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. My comments were, were put forward through John Armstrong. I'm with the, the same group as him.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Then we move on to Bonnie Rowe from Dutton Dunwich Opponents of Wind Turbines. Welcome, Bonnie. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship and council members and staff. My comments this evening are with regard to the current official plan, section E.4.2, which is renewable energy systems. Thanks for allowing us a few minutes to present our thoughts during this beginning phase of the official plan review. I speak as the Secretary Treasurer on behalf of Dutton Dunwich Opponents of Wind Turbines, and we use the acronym DOUT. We are a grassroots citizen group incorporated as a nonprofit in 2016. DOUT is comprised of an executive of 15 local community members, and we have a general membership of over 200 families. County council members may be aware of the upheaval that our community went through beginning in 2013, when a U.S.-based company proposed an industrial wind turbine project in Dutton Dunwich. The view of DOUT, as well as many citizens in Dutton Dunwich, was at that time and continues to be that the production of energy with wind turbines is not good policy. For brevity of this discussion, I won't go into the many factors that have gone into the development of this view. A public survey undertaken by the municipality of Dutton Dunwich in early 2014 demonstrated that over 80% of community did not support this type of project for our community. However, at the time, municipal governments did not have the authority to limit or give direction as to citing of these industrial structures within our community. I won't go into the multiple strategies of opposition that DOUT, as well as the Dutton Dunwich Municipal Council went through to halt this project. Suffice it to say that this was an extremely upsetting period in our community. Fortunately, with the enactment of the Green Energy Repeal Act 2018 by the current provincial government, the project planned for Dutton Dunwich was halted. Amendments to the Renewable Energy Approvals Regulation 35909 restored municipal planning authority for the citing of renewable energy projects. The revised provincial policy statement in May of 2020 in section 1.6.11 uses supportive language as opposed to directives when discussing the development of renewable energy systems. This language allows some discretion for municipalities when creating planning documents that address renewable energy projects. Through the leadership of Mayor Purcell and the Dutton Dunwich Council, our municipality has revised the Renewable Energy Systems section of our official plan to take advantage of this discretionary language. Our DOUT members completely support the language used in this revised official plan, which does not support the development of large-scale wind energy systems in our community. In the current County of Elgin Official Plan, section E.4.2, the language around development of renewable energy systems is also supportive rather than directive, and that is good. This section, E.4.2, does make a statement, and I'll quote, "These systems significantly reduce the amount of harmful emissions to the environment when compared to conventional energy systems," end of quote. We encourage the county to either remove this statement or carry out a more up-to-date literature and research review before deciding to include that statement. There is a great deal of newer literature that debunks that statement. And in the final section of section E.4.2, the Green Energy Act reference should be removed. To summarize, it is our sincere hope that in this County of Elgin Official Plan Review, any language used to give guidance around renewable energy projects will consider the diverse views of all municipalities across Elgin County and allow discretion for municipalities to have final authority in placement of renewable energy facilities. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
All right. Thank you, Bonnie. Appreciate your remarks. And our final delegation tonight is Mary Ann Vandengavel from Great Lakes Farms. Whenever you're ready, Mary Ann, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden and County Council, for your time tonight. My name is Mary Ann Vandengavel, and I farm in Southold Township with my husband and family. We have been farming for over 10 years and have had many new homes go up around us during that time. Many of our new neighbors are unaware of all the smells, sounds, and inconveniences that go with agriculture. It often creates a difficult, uncomfortable situation. So we've been trying to find a way that maybe we can prevent this problem and maybe educate new residents going forward. I have looked at other counties, and I know up north, I think it was maybe the Gushbray County, they have wording put into every real estate transaction that can actually make new residents aware of the agricultural community that goes around, around them, around their new property. So it is in this, my submission that I think you got, just read the wording that they have, and maybe if the county could adopt something like this that would help us as farmers be able to continue to practice our agricultural practices. So it says, "The buyer acknowledges that the property lies within, partially within, adjacent to, or within two kilometers of an area zone used or identified for agricultural and food production activities, and that such activities occur in that area. These activities may include intensive operations that cause discomfort and inconvenience that involve, but not limited to, dust, noise, flies, light, odor, smoke, traffic, vibrations, operating of machinery during any 24-hour period, storage and utilization of manure, and the application by spraying or otherwise of chemical fertilizers, soil amendments, herbicides, and pesticides. One or more of these inconveniences have protection in Ontario under the Farming and Food Production Protection Act." Now, although the Food Protection Act is there, new residents really aren't aware of that, and what we found, our business is very seasonal. So if, when they come to look at their new property, that, that activity isn't going on at the time, so it's very difficult as us, as adjacent landowners, to educate every possible homebuyer. So if this was in the clause of the real estate transactions, it would really help us in the agricultural community. My second point is since the county is the approving body for Southold's official plan, and they're kind of nearing the end of their review process, I think, it's, I know it's a long process, I just wanted to bring some concerns about the property at 4509 Union Road. Although it may be identified as new residential area at some point in time, at this point, it is premature, so just want to make sure that the county double-checks what is going on at the lower tier to make sure that it isn't premature. It is a large development, and so I want to make sure there's enough time for public discussion for a decision like that. We also would like to make sure that the sanitary and sewer service is finalized between Central Elgin and Southold before the approval is, is done, because if the approval is done too early, it may prevent proper development, and then we might have smaller developments all over. So just to make sure all this stuff is done first. Also, currently, Southold's official plan, there is no need to extend the current settlement area, as it says in section 3.2.2.4 of Southold's official plan. And this land is not a great candidate date for development because it is valuable agricultural land. And in section 5.1.3.3 of Southold's official plan, it says that they want to protect that. It's also identified as an area of natural and scientific interest under Schedule II of Southold's official plan and in the Natural Heritage System, and identified as a natural hazard under the category of floodplain under Southold's official plan, section 4.2.1.5, and Schedule III. So all of this stuff, I think, should be looked at prior to making this area subject for development. And lastly, the alternative accommodations was mentioned for agriculture, and this would also be helpful to our farming practice, as well as many other in the township.
Got to wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Good timing. Thank you, Mary Ann. Appreciate the comments. Now, this time, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank all the delegates for, for providing counsel with this valuable feedback tonight. These comments, along with all other comments that we receive over the course of the consultation period, will be taken into consideration during the official plan review process. Thank you, everyone. At this point, I'd like to motion to move into committee of the whole, please.
Purcell.
Purcell, Purcell Ketchabah. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Menel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9:00, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Reports of counsel. You're up, Nancy.
Me again?
Go ahead.
So in terms of next steps, a presentation here. Perfect. So tonight's meeting is just the first step in a year-long process. What's important right now is engaging the community and raising the awareness of this project across the county. As counselors, it's important that you, in your dealings with your constituents, let them know how to engage with us and who to contact and where to look for more information. There is an engagement strategy that has been developed and can be reviewed by the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee, depending on council's direction. We have scheduled attendance at the local municipal council meetings, and we'll use this as an opportunity to inform the review and get feedback on those local issues. We will also be setting up meetings with local stakeholders to engage them, and we'll be developing a discussion guide to help with those conversations. We anticipate selecting a consultant for that population projections mid-April. Our online survey is also available as of tonight, and we will accept any written or verbal comments until April 15th. We anticipate bringing back a report to council identifying the issues and scope of the official plan review in May, and we hope to have other engagement opportunities throughout the spring and the summer. Excellent. So the recommendation is to receive the comments heard tonight and forward them to the manager of planning to be considered as part of the official plan review process. And the second recommendation is that council approve the next steps in the process that were identified previously. Next slide. Within the next few months, it is anticipated that council will review a report on the feedback received and discussion on the official plan review's scope. And we also anticipate future public meetings related to Elgin Natural Heritage Study in the short term. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. I'd open the floor for any questions from counselors, please. Comments, go ahead. Counselor Jones.
Just for clarification through you, Mr. Warden, to Nancy, when you say, next steps, are you saying that it's going to go to the Rural Initiatives Committee or it's going to go to council halls? Is that part of the next step that you're wanting us to describe to you tonight, or...
Through you, Mr. Chair. So what I anticipate is that these comments are forwarded to me. We will be attending the local municipalities to get the word out as well. We'll be receiving all the comments in the interim. And then ultimately, the, any recommendations based on the feedback we've received from the survey, from all the comments, will go to county council with like an issue scoping report, and at that time, council can also provide feedback on what they've heard and if there's anything that's being missed or anything else that needs to be looked at at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Further questions, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I wanted to clarify the, through you, to the manager of planning. So full engagement strategy has not been completely developed and reviewed by the Rural Initiative Committee yet, right? Is that a recommendation for a next step?
Through you, Mr. Warden, yes. That wasn't actually in the recommendation because it's something that was developed somewhat recently, but yes, that, that can be a recommendation that we could add tonight with respect to RIPA reviewing the consultation strategy.
Go ahead.
Follow-up, Mr. Warden. Thank you. Certainly, I would support this recommendation because it's not, no surprise to my fellow counselors that process and communication and engagement are very, very important to me, and because this is a very important process, I would like to make sure we get it right. And already, I know there was some confusion even about tonight's meeting and in the communication. So on one hand, there was lots of communication about this evening's meeting, but the purpose of this evening's meeting was actually stated differently on three, in three different locations. So already, what I'm hearing from constituents is that the process is not clear and that they don't know what to expect. And I think there's an element of also people not knowing what they don't know. So we will have to be very proactive in explaining and taking more of a, almost like a marketing lens as opposed to a policy procedure lens. So all this to say that we need to get this right because we know the results will be disputed if there are perceived flaws in our process, but more importantly, it's, this is something that impacts everybody in the county, and we'll have to make sure that we do reach out to everybody and be very, very inclusive, not relying on past experiences or assumptions of, you know, people don't show up. Sometimes people don't show up because we haven't properly reached out or haven't, like our advertising is not conducive, it's not inviting, it's intimidating, it's, the language is, is not accessible. So, so all this to say, like I said, that I would definitely support the recommendation for the Rural Initiative Committee to be involved in the engagement strategy.
Thank you for those comments. Further questions or comments? Go ahead. Go ahead, Duncan.
I guess my, my one question is, is, I guess it's a capacity issue. I don't know how many lower-tier municipalities have their OPs up for renewal or currently beginning or working on them, and do we have the capacity at the county to create and implement our own official plan? And also being the approval process for the lower-tier municipalities, we got enough room on our desks to be able to be all those things to all those people?
Who would like to try to answer that?
I, I could take a stab at it first. So at this time, we have, I'm aware of, let me just see here, 1, 2, 3, 5 official plan reviews that are currently ongoing through, at the local municipal level, either in, in various stages. So some are at the tail end. Two have been submitted to me officially. Elmer has submitted their official plan review, official plan amendments, based on their review, as well as Dutton Dunwich has now submitted theirs. I am also anticipating Southolds will be coming shortly, and I know that West Elgin, sorry, Malahide is close to the end of their processes. So having said that, it's going to be quite the balancing act, given that at this time, our official plan review is being done in-house, and is obviously being led by myself, and only being one staff member, as well as providing that approval authority review based on our requirements. It's going to be a very busy time for the county overall and for myself. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Julie, do you want to have a comment?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Through the budget, council did support adding and enhancing staff within the department, in particular to support the Land Division Committee and other planning functions. We also have a part-time administrative clerk. So I think in terms of capacity, it is going to be an incredibly busy year for the planning department. Where we may need some additional support is through, through our discussions with the Rural Initiatives Committee and the expectations for enhanced engagement strategies. We may have to, you know, outsource some of the marketing aspects and components of it, so I think that might take some pressure off the planning team if we were to kind of troubleshoot in that way.
Thank you. Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Just thank you. More of a comment. It's unfortunate that this happened five or six years ago, too. And for some reason, when the county started their process for the first time, it took a little longer than expected, and all the other townships or municipalities right now that are going through, again, are forced to by the province, and we all end up doing it at the same time, and now we're into the same conundrum where a lot of us are going to have ours done first, and once the county's done theirs, we're going to have to do amendments to ours to comply with the county's new one, and I'm not sure, but whoever's sitting around this table five years now, think about that before you start doing this, and get the county's done first. It'd make a whole lot more sense.
Thank you for that, Grant. Further comments, please? Are we all done?
Mr. Warden, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Certainly.
Just, just food for thought, and I'm not sure if this would work with the county, but in the town of Elmer, what we did is we advertised, and we got a working group put together, and it actually worked out great because we had a cross-sector of many people from different, you know, backgrounds, like work backgrounds or, you know, other things. And they brought a lot of information forward that really helped us with the official plan. And in conjunction with what Counselor Jager is saying, that's just another way that we can engage the public. And so working groups, sometimes, I know we have a lot of working groups, so I'm just, I know it's tough, but it is, it's a thought, and it really worked well for us, so it's just a suggestion.
It looks like it's been noted. I see, ready, taking notes, so thank you for that. Would you like to comment, Julie, or...
Just, we'd be happy to follow council's direction on that one.
All right. Further comments?
Just one more comment, Mr. Warden. Mallard is coming close to finishing off their official plan, and certainly staff is well aware that we're ahead of the county in their official plan, but they indicated that there should be no problem with minor adjustments afterwards.
Thank you for that. Counselor Jager, you got a comment?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Counselor French's comment. I was curious, in fact, if staff are aware of any lessons learned from the last process. This is my understanding that there was a group of, I think the plan was forty or fifty people to be involved and to be a source of input and consultation, so perhaps not for this evening, but certainly if there are any reflections on the last process and what worked well and what could be done differently, and how the use of, I think it was called a focus group, how that worked out, I think that would be beneficial.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. So my, my first attempt at reviewing that information has indicated that very little detail exists about the metrics, including the number of participants who actually, so I know that was a targeted goal of forty to fifty people, I have no way of confirming right now how many people actually attended. I do think that the Rural Initiatives Committee will be pretty pleased with the engagement strategy that we've put together, and you'll be able to kind of fine-tune it, but in terms of going back to 2012, 2010 to 2013, it's going to be really hard to gather any useful information. We may just have to build upon some of our other experiences, some of the experiences that our neighbors who have recently undergone this process have learned, and apply those to our current process. But I'm committed to continuing to look for that information.
Comment, Counselor Martin?
Yes. The Central Elgin put their official plan, we're supposed to have been reviewing it, and of course, we completed it before the county did originally, but we put it on hold, waiting for the county one to be finished, to see how it would possibly affect our official plan, and we will certainly be working on it as soon as we are able to.
Thank you for that. Further comments? We have a couple of recommendations here.
Want to read those out?
Oh, yeah.
So add in the Rural Initiatives Committee.
So three recommendations. Do we want to take them all one at a time, or all together? So the two recommendations are there, and we're going to add the third one, that it's directed back to the Rural Initiatives.
Engagement, the communication and engagement plan be reviewed by the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee.
So at this point, I'd be looking for mover and seconder to adopt those recommendations?
Move, Mr. Warden.
Counselor Mennel, seconded by Counselor Jones. Everyone ready for the vote? We know we're voting on, so please call, call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. I think we're at other business. Do we have any statements, inquiries by members? Any notice of motion? Matters of urgency? You have a need for closed session? Not going to take a recess. Or a motion to rise and report? No. Adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole. Do you want to read that?
We just need a mover and seconder.
Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by French, seconded by, not Jim Herbert, but McPhail. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
So we're at, we're at the end of our meeting. Certainly thank everyone for your participation tonight and our guests. I'm at point of looking for a mover to, mover and seconder for adjournment, please. Moved by Jones, seconded by Purcell. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
So we're at, we're at the end of our meeting. Certainly thank everyone for your participation tonight and our guests. I'm at point of looking for a mover to, mover and seconder for adjournment, please. Moved by Jones, seconded by Purcell. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden, Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
So we're at, we're at the end of our meeting. Certainly thank everyone for your participation tonight and our guests. I'm at point of looking for a mover to, mover and seconder for adjournment, please.